To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Counselor may have the Open Public Meetings Act statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, in compliance with NJSA ten colon four, the Open Public Meetings Act. Notice of this special meeting, but regularly scheduled meeting of the Jackson Township Planning Board has been published and posted in all appropriate locations.
Thank you.
Mr. Dolan, Dr. Campbell, Mr. Riker.
Mr. Dolan is here.
Mr. Bernstein.
Here.
Mr. Herman.
Here.
Mr. Canderozzi.
Mr. Wall.
Mr. Fleming.
Here.
Mr. Recording. Mr. Herring. Mr. Hudak.
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's on the agenda, there are an executive session, we're going to move that to the, to the end. It's just going to be a brief one, about five minutes. So I don't want to hold up anything right now. We have a motion for the payment of voucher reporting secretary for this evening, February twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, please. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Stop. The minutes that we have, we're going to table these meeting minutes until the next meeting, until everyone has had adequate time to review that. So we're going to jump right to engineering and planning matters. Gentlemen, Mr. Cle, you want to lead off, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just very, very briefly, and relating to the applications, site plan applications, in relation to solar and the charging stations. I think the board has been looking at the different applications, and there was always a question, will the applicant be able, will he be willing to incorporate solar into his project? And typically, the answer is, of course, you know, no, no problem. But, you know, how is that effectuated? Or how is that carried through the approval is really the question. I think it'll be fleshed out in the different applications that we hear. But as far as resolution compliance and long-term.
Gentlemen, in the back. Gentlemen. Thank you. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
I think the applications, as they come in, they'll, they'll, you know, flesh out, hear the discussion, and when you say, yes, you'll incorporate, what does that mean? Half the roof, a quarter of the roof? And what's the guarantees to, you know, to make sure that that happens? A final sign off from, from the engineer that it's, yeah, there's solar there, but how much? Again, it's more just a discussion item, but I think it's important that we, please consider it. I know that the question's coming.
What are your recommendations on how to?
It's really a kind of a case by case. And the applicant agrees to incorporate solar. When he does the analysis, I'm in the shade all the time. It's like, I can't really do so. You know, he comes back to, to, to me, where the board is, says, I can't do this because of X, Y, and Z, and the board relieves them of that condition. Is it half the roof? All the roof? It, you know, it's, I would, I would say case by case, and let's see what the applicant's put on the table and offer.
Well, during your review, when you add the question about solar and charging stations to your checklist.
Yep.
In your discussions.
Sure, sure. It's usually in my report, you know, somewhere, usually cite utilization, talk about charging stations. But sure, we can, you know, make it a point that is addressed.
Okay. Mr. Peters, hand.
Nothing to add, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Legal matters.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, we have three resolutions for this evening. First is Resolution twenty twenty-two oh two, Resolution granting preliminary and final site plan approval for training center and annex building where the Matita Conk Golf Course eligible to vote are Mr. Dolan, Mr. Riker, Mr. Wall, Mr. Fleming, Mr. Herring, and you, 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 Mr. Chairman.
Has everyone had adequate time to review this resolution? Everybody okay voting with that? Yes? Okay. Someone care to make a motion?
Motion to approve.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
She, she's not eligible.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes, thank you.
And Mr. Herring, too.
And Mr. Herring.
Resolution, it's the same folks eligible for all three resolutions. Twenty twenty-two oh three, granting the time extension to Aleve, New Jersey, Inc., also known as West Common or Business Park. That's a final time extension through June thirty, two thousand twenty-two.
Anyone care to make a motion, please? Roll call, please.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
And lastly, Mr. Chairman, two thousand twenty-two oh four, granting preliminary and final site plan approval with variance relief for the Whitesville Business Park, located off of Whitesville Road. That's the, the old XL site. Eligible, same eligible folks to vote.
Get a motion from someone?
Mr. Rollen?
Yes.
Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Hudak?
Yes.
And Mr. Herring?
Board matters, anybody have anything they'd like to bring to our attention this evening? No? Okay, right into the applications. We have block eighty-six oh one, lot forty-one through twenty-eight, North Cooksbridge Road, LLC.
Mr. Chair, before you begin that, would Sal Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant, would you mind taking number two, which is just an extension ahead of us? Because we're going to take a lot longer than that would take, and Mr. Borden's only here for that application.
Um, yeah, I don't have a problem.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to start with then block one-one-seven-zero-one, lots nine, twenty-five, twenty-six, and thirty-three, Rutherford Estates.
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, Mr. Herman is eligible to vote this evening as the alternate number one. Mr. Borden, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
However, I jumped in front of the chairman.
You did. That's okay. Just have a seat for a second.
Gentlemen, do you have anything? Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application for an extension of a final major subdivision, Resolution two thousand and sixteen dash fifteen, memorialized in August of two thousand and sixteen, granted major subdivision approval to establish twenty residential building lots on, on the property. The general terms and conditions of the approval were extended to December fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, through the Permanent Extension Act, the executive order. The map has been recorded, the lots exist, and we, the total details, but I believe the filings commission notes that there has been a zoning change after the map was filed, or after the protection period inspired, and are requiring that the applicant come back and get an extension for the, say, the general terms and conditions of the original approval. Even though the map's been filed and the lots are created, Mr. Borden, you know, can correct me, but I believe construction started on one or, one or two of the lots. So I'll say the, you know, denial of the extension request would just mean a lot of applications going to the Board of Justice. It's, in my mind, when the map's filed, it's created, there's no, you know, the zoning changes, the original terms and conditions apply. So they're looking for an extension to two thousand and, or December fourth, two thousand and twenty-two, and would have two more extensions available.
And this is all in line with you?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We'd ask the witness to indicate what the previous zoning was, what the current zoning is, what the protection period takes them to, what they're asking the protection period to be extended to, and to give some information as required under the Land use law as to why they're here requesting the extension.
Okay, thank you. It's actually, Mr. Burton is the attorney.
Mr. Alfieri, a conflict arose, and myself, I can't.
You'll have to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. And a conflict arose, and Mr. Alfieri could not appear on behalf of the applicant. So I'm sitting in for the able hands of Mr. Alfieri. And I think I'm going to cede my spot to Mr. Borden to present to, and answer any questions of the board.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Noah Burton, B-U-R-T-O-N, and that's with Burton Jacobovich.
In Lake.
Thank you.
Yep.
Lake.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. I appreciate the consideration. I believe we will be brief, I hope we will. The project is known as Rutherford Estates. It is located along Route five seventy-one, Cassville, Tom's River Road, just south of Route five twenty-eight, or West Veterans, or East Veterans Highway, directly across from the Castle Firehouse. As Mr. Cle noted, the subdivision was granted a final approval in, in two thousand and sixteen. That approval was valid until December fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we are seeking a one-year extension until December fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The property is located in a split zone. Most of the property is in the PV zone, the Pine Lands Village Zone, and a small portion of the property along Tom Cassville Road is in the PVC two zone, a Pine Lands Village Commercial Zone. The project was approved as a sub twenty-three lot subdivision, which consists of twenty single-family, one-acre residential lots, minimum one-acre size, two commercial lots in the PVC two zone. One of those lots pursuant to the conditions of our two thousand and sixteen approval is to be dedicated to the Castle Fire Department, and then a single basin for the stormwater management lot. So twenty-three lots, twenty residential, two commercial, and one stormwater. The, Mr. Cle did issue a resolution compliance letter for the project in May five of two thousand and twenty-one. He is correct, construction has started on the project. The property has been cleared, and we're in the process of beginning to construct the drainage system in the roads. The, the, the final plat, however, was not filed. We did post the bonds to start the site work, but the plat was not filed. And that's the reason for the extension, is to allow additional time to, to file the plat. The zoning is still the same, it has not changed. So the, there's, there's no change in the zoning or master plan at all. But we are simply seeking that extra time to file the plat.
Anything further?
I, I have nothing further. And, and maybe just a, there's been no changes whatsoever to the plans since Mr. Cle had signed a resolution compliance letter in May of twenty-one. Correct.
It's actually, Mr. Burton is the attorney.
Mr. Alfieri, a conflict arose, and myself, I can't.
You'll have to speak into the microphone.
I'm sorry. And a conflict arose, and Mr. Alfieri could not appear on behalf of the applicant. So I'm sitting in for the able hands of Mr. Alfieri. And I think I'm going to cede my spot to Mr. Borden to present to, and answer any questions of the board.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
Noah Burton, B-U-R-T-O-N, and that's with Burton Jacobovich.
In Lake.
Thank you.
Yep.
Lake.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Alfieri. I appreciate the consideration. I believe we will be brief, I hope we will. The project is known as Rutherford Estates. It is located along Route five seventy-one, Cassville, Tom's River Road, just south of Route five twenty-eight, or West Veterans, or East Veterans Highway, directly across from the Castle Firehouse. As Mr. Cle noted, the subdivision was granted a final approval in, in two thousand and sixteen. That approval was valid until December fourth, two thousand and twenty-one, and we are seeking a one-year extension until December fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. The property is located in a split zone. Most of the property is in the PV zone, the Pine Lands Village Zone, and a small portion of the property along Tom Cassville Road is in the PVC two zone, a Pine Lands Village Commercial Zone. The project was approved as a sub twenty-three lot subdivision, which consists of twenty single-family, one-acre residential lots, minimum one-acre size, two commercial lots in the PVC two zone. One of those lots pursuant to the conditions of our two thousand and sixteen approval is to be dedicated to the Castle Fire Department, and then a single basin for the stormwater management lot. So twenty-three lots, twenty residential, two commercial, and one stormwater. The, Mr. Cle did issue a resolution compliance letter for the project in May five of two thousand and twenty-one. He is correct, construction has started on the project. The property has been cleared, and we're in the process of beginning to construct the drainage system in the roads. The, the, the final plat, however, was not filed. We did post the bonds to start the site work, but the plat was not filed. And that's the reason for the extension, is to allow additional time to, to file the plat. The zoning is still the same, it has not changed. So the, there's, there's no change in the zoning or master plan at all. But we are simply seeking that extra time to file the plat. I, I have nothing further. And, and maybe just a, there's been no changes whatsoever to the plans since Mr. Cle had signed a resolution compliance letter in May of twenty-one. Correct. Well, because it dates, it, it directed back to December of two thousand and twenty-one. We, we actually applied for the extension in October. So the intent was that we'd be here before December fourth and, and get a year, but it's, you know, it's, it's irrelevant, you know, we're here today, and we're just seeking until December fourth, two thousand and twenty-two.
May I follow up on that question, Mr. Chairman? Your intent for the reason for this extension is, in essence, solely to have time to file that plat within the, within the?
That's correct.
Anything else? Yes.
Okay. Oh. I, I was just reading off the two thousand and sixteen resolution, so.
So, sorry to be a lawyer, got to ask the question, though, I wasn't here. So that was, was that a condition of approval or an offer of approval to have?
I believe that was an offer.
So what happens? So let's put it on the record, though. What happens if that lot is not dedicated to a public purpose? What happens to it?
I, I apologize, Sean. This is what happens when all these years, five years goes by, and I, I forget. The, the resolution does discuss the fact that the township, district, and fire companies do not wish to have the lot. I'm sorry. I was reading the front page of the resolution, but in page two, it discusses what, what Mr. Fleming states, which is the district does not wish to, to utilize the lot.
So then what becomes of the lot?
Uh, just a commercial lot in the PVC two zone.
Did, did you hear the question?
No, he was on my deaf side, I'm sorry. And that's not, not joking, he really is on my deaf side. I'm deaf in my left ear. No, oh, no, I appreciate that. I wouldn't survive leaving the room if I did that.
Okay. I guess we have to open this up to public comment, if anyone cares to comment on this application. Now's your time, step up to the microphone. All in favor? Okay. Any further comment from anyone? Questions? Nope. All right, anyone care to make a motion on this?
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yeah.
Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Yes. Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you again for your considerations.
So now, block eight-six-zero-one, lot forty-one through twenty-eight, North Cooksbridge Road, LLC. And, Mr. Cle?
Um, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application has some history. I believe the last time we heard anything from the applicant was back in July of two thousand and twenty-one. The application originally came in as a eleven thousand, three hundred square foot professional office building. We're now down to seven thousand square feet. There was a number of variances and design waivers that were required in conjunction with the original application. Variance-wise, we're down to none, and design exception as far as the, actually, eliminated the design exceptions as well. So I think the heated word has been said as far as reducing the size of, of the building, bringing the application more compliant with current standards. Of course, the question of solar and the charging stations, we something I would like to hear from the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated February eighteenth. As Mr. Cle had indicated, it appears that they've reduced the number of variances and design waivers down to zero. We went, we went back and forth a number of times as it relates to the issues and items that were important to the board. We'd ask the applicant to put forward his revised plan in some detail, so the board understands how we got from point A to point C. And that's all we have for now, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, Cleary Giacobi Alfieri, and Jacobs, on behalf of the applicant. As your board professionals have indicated, there have been several iterations to this plan. This is actually our third public hearing. It's, the plan started with eleven thousand plus square feet with many variances. We're now down to a two-story, seven thousand square foot building, completely variance-free, fully conforming with the zone. We did provide traffic testimony at an earlier hearing, and there were no traffic issues associated with the project. Obviously, now we're, now we're like sixty percent of what we were, so there, there are fewer, less traffic issues, or fewer, zero traffic issues. We do have one witness tonight, Mr. Halpert, who was our engineer. We're going to ask that he summarize the plan revisions. We do have some exhibits that were submitted in advance that we would put up on the screen, and then we would address all the technical comments contained within the professional reports. The two issues that I believe Mr. Peters raised, or, or, I'm not sure who raised it now, relating to the electric vehicle charging stations and the solar, we have, we, we will comply with the new statute as it relates to the charging stations. They haven't been put on the plan yet because it's relatively new, and we're not sure how your board professionals want to handle that. But the statute does say that those stations do count towards the parking, so by dedicating whatever number of spaces are required, we won't, it won't trigger a parking variance. As it relates to solar, the applicant's not yet in the position to determine whether solar would work for this site or not. The building is a lot smaller now, it's only a thirty-five-hundred square foot footprint. They're willing to consider it, but we're not in a position to commit tonight to the solar. And, and if the board has another opinion, then we'll live with whatever the board's opinion is. But I'd like to, Mr. Halpert was sworn in and qualified two times now, but he's here again to do the same.
Again, sir, do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And as Mr. Alfieri indicated, you've been previously sworn in, your credentials accepted, correct?
Correct, thank you.
Thank you.
So, Mr. Halpert, while we're, we'll be consistent with the exhibit that Anthony placed on the screen, why don't we start with the architectural, and we'll work our back, way back to the site plan. So the board can see an architectural rendering that has been submitted to the board. That rendering does identify the materials?
The, the architect plan does identify the, the materials. The color scheme is not called out on the architect plan, and it will be called out. The, the footprint has been reduced to, to thirty-five-hundred square foot footprint and seven thousand square foot of floor space.
And Anthony, can you bring up the, the latest site plan exhibit? There's a colored rendering, a colored site plan, is there not?
No, this is the, the rendering, and we have a site plan exhibit, two twenty-eight site plan exhibits.
Want to use that?
This, this is the circulation, there's site plan. Yes.
Okay, can you describe for the board the changes that were made to address the various comments we've previously received?
Mr. Alfieri, prior to doing that, you moved, I know it was submitted, so remove marking it, though. Can you describe when it was submitted?
Yeah. Can you just identify that exhibit, please?
This, this is the site plan exhibits, and.
And.
Revision date.
The revision date is twelve-nine-twenty-one.
Okay, please, continue.
The, the, the site plan that, that was submitted with the revision date, twelve-nine-twenty-one, is, shows thirty-five parking spaces. The original plan that was submitted to the board with variances had four rows of parking and variances on setbacks, and there were variances on square footage, on, on parking supply. The current plan is showing three rows, three rows of parking with another row along the building. There are thirty-five spaces. There are two twenty-four-foot aisles, two twenty-six-foot aisles. The thirty-five spaces with two handicapped spaces. And there is, the, the original plan had the refuse enclosure in the front. The original plan, I had, thank you. The original plan had the refuse enclosure in the front. The refuse enclosure has been moved with, there's an aisle to get to it, and that, that provides more access to the building. It is a fifteen-by-twenty refuse enclosure for both solid waste and recyclables. And with these changes, the applicant is not seeking variances, any variances on the site plan.
Did you provide also, the other exhibit is the turning template?
There's an exhibit for showing a turning template for both refuse and for, for fire circulation.
That would be the next, Anthony, the one you had up previously. And while he's bringing it up, can you identify that exhibit and the last revision date?
The last, the last revision date is, this is landscape, the original exhibit that you brought up would be the circulation exhibits. Correct. Revision date of twelve-nine-twenty-one, and this is the circulation exhibit and showing sort of the fire circulation as per the Jackson Fire turning templates.
And you showed this plan to Stanley O'Brien, the fire official, and he signed off on it?
Correct. This was submitted to the fire official, and, and he signed off on the plan.
And also, you, there are two reports, one from Mr. Peters dated somewhere here. And one from Mr. Cle. Mr. Cle's is dated February eleventh. There are very various, Ernie, I, for whatever reason, I just had to report, and I can't find it.
February eighteenth is review number five.
Thank you. There are various technical comments, many of which were discussed during, during earlier presentations. But are there any, are you prepared to indicate this evening that you will address all of those technical comments?
Yes.
As a condition of approval?
Yes.
That's really all we have, Mr. Chairman. We're prepared to answer any questions you have.
Just to get it on the record, there's, I see here, there's a first floor and second floor, there is no basement, right?
Correct, there is no basement, there is a crawl. Correct. There is no basement. There is a crawl space. There is room. The refuse enclosure could be pushed farther back.
I just had a Howell Township meeting at 7 o'clock where they voted no on a solar farm instead of a warehouse. So some towns don't see it the way you do. I don't know why. You make, yours make more sense. It's hard for us to commit because, my, well, only because they haven't analyzed the costs associated with the solar versus what the benefits are. They haven't gotten that far in the construction details. Okay. I don't write the checks, so I have to look to my client for that. I'll try, I'll get you an answer before you act tonight.
Just a thought. Could a condition of any approval the board may grant be conditioned upon some type of feasibility study, feasibility analysis of solar? It could be submitted to me and to the board. If I didn't have any problems with it, just move it ahead. If I did, of course, bring it to the board. That's just a suggestion to move the movement ahead.
That's a, that's a fair suggestion, Mr. Clea. So that's fine.
Anyone else?
Well, exactly. So the two attorneys just looked at each other. So when does it become feasible? What's the trigger to make it feasible?
We trust Mr. Clea's decision.
Say if the entire roof is solar, good job. It's feasible. It's good. If you come back and say, well, we only want to do half the roof because who knows X, Y, and Z, I might have a little discomfort with that and I would bring that to the board.
So the threshold, so that the applicant understands as well, the threshold is not economics, really. The threshold is how, is, is the provision of the solar to the extent the roof will cover, right? Roofer, I guess, the parking.
But if there's utilities on the roof that we may not be aware of, then, you know, would eliminate the ability to put solar. There's a good reason where you can't, you know, doesn't mean you can't do any solar because of the mechanicals, but that's a reason why you can't do the whole thing.
Okay.
Yeah, and as long as we can do it administratively and not have to come back to the board, unless, of course, Mr. Clea's dissatisfied, then.
That's, that's fair. I just wanted to make sure that it was a trigger so that there was no argument as to what the trigger likely is. I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
At this time, I'd like to open it up to public comment. Anybody wishing to comment about this application, please step up to the microphone. All in favor? Okay, everyone. Any further comments from anyone? Yes, Ms. Campbell.
I agree. Sometimes you have to hit someone over the head. I know. Understood.
So with that, can I get a motion?
Mr. Dolan?
With Ms. Campbell's recommendations, yes.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker? Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Herman? Mr. Wall? Mr. Fleming? Mr. Herring? Mr. Hudak?
Thank you. Thank you. Who would have thunk it, Ernie?
You want to switch up?
You're not here. One more.
So we're going to switch up, Mr. Alfieri, if that's okay with you. We're going on a block 4101, lot 20.02, Jackson Woods SC Clubhouse.
Oh, okay.
Okay, Mr. Clea, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Application for preliminary and final major site plan associated with the clubhouse and rec area for the Jackson Woods residential or multifamily development. Resolution 2021-06 memorialized in August of 2021, ran in a preliminary major subdivision of 465 multifamily units and final major subdivision approval for 186 of those multifamily units. The, that approval deferred consideration of the site plan component for the clubhouse to a future date. The applicant has submitted the application. That's here, what we're here for tonight. The clubhouse recreation component of the Jackson Woods development. It's pretty much variance-free except for a front yard setback to the parking area. There is a design exception for the number of driveway connections to the, to the internal roadway system of the development. We provided some technical revisions to the applicant, which should be addressed. And of course, the solar and the charging station proposals for the building.
Thank you. Mr. Peters?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Report dated December 1st, 2021. Mr. Clea was correct. It appears that the only variance it's requested is for a parking area setback. If the board recalls, when the applicant was here last, they talked about deferring the site plan because a future developer was going to come in and they had their own particular type of product that they wanted to build. So it wasn't the Tom Bavino clubhouse. This is, I think, the D.R. Horton clubhouse. So to that extent, this is more specific as opposed to the general layout we may have seen in previous plans. So we'd simply ask the applicant to take a few moments, go through both Mr. Clea's and our report to indicate what their, if there are any issues complying with those. And to the best of my knowledge, site work, site work at the site has begun, but there have been no sales of units yet. So the entire project is still owned by the developer or the sponsor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ron Shimannowitz from the firm of Hutton Shimannowitz here on behalf of the applicant, D.R. Horton. As your consultants stated, we are before you tonight seeking preliminary and final major site plan approval for the clubhouse portion of what we call Jackson Woods Southeast, which was previously approved. And you're seeing the clubhouse portion for the first time tonight. And as Mr. Clea and Mr. Peters stated, this is the D.R. Horton clubhouse. With us tonight are basically three witnesses. Mark Lescavage from Colliers Engineering is going to present the site plan. We have William Feinberg from Feinberg Associates as our architect. He'll show you the renderings and floor plans of the building. And we have Mr. Robert Fettcho, who is a representative of D.R. Horton, who can answer any operational questions. And with that brief introduction, unless there's any other housekeeping, we would call as our first witness, Mark Lescavage. Have him sworn.
Thank you, sir, for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board will represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, and then through the chairman, your credentials?
It's Mark Lescavage. That's spelled L-E-S-C-A-V-A-G-E. I'm a senior project manager at Colliers Engineering and Design. I've been practicing civil engineering for 25 years. I've been licensed since 1997. I've been in front of many planning boards and zoning boards of adjustment throughout New Jersey, including this board, I believe, three times in the last year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mark, before you get rolling, imagine you're going to use some exhibits. If you want to call out what you're going to refer to first, someone will mark that as Exhibit A1.
Sure. The first exhibit is actually one that we didn't submit. It is the preliminary plat exhibit. I presented in the subdivision hearing. But I think it's relevant to presenting this project. So I would like that, present that as, I guess, A1.
Yeah. You want to put that up and mark it right on the board with today's date? And just tell us the title and date of that document.
Preliminary plat exhibit dated December 4th, 2020.
May proceed with your testimony.
Should I put in the other exhibits?
If you wanted to mark them all up in advance, that's easier for you. Absolutely. Let's go through them.
I could do that, I guess, as we go.
Okay.
Okay, I'll start with the existing conditions and referring to A1. The lot in question tonight was created as part of Section 1 of Jackson Woods Southeast subdivision. You can see from the exhibit, it is the large blue lot right in the center of the project. Is now, since the plat has been filed, block 4101, lot 20.466. And it consists of 7.95 acres. In general, where it's located within the subdivision, it's adjacent to the traffic circle that was proposed up from Club Boulevard, which enters off of West Freehold Road up into the center part of the project. And then the lot actually is on the north side of the circle. And it's adjacent to Avalon Lane to the east or the right on the exhibit. And Brielle Terrace, which is to the left or the west within the exhibit. That is the existing lot in question. What we're proposing tonight is the 6,084-square-foot clubhouse building. And with that, I will enter another Exhibit A2, which is the color rendering of the site landscape plan. And that is dated January 11th, 2022. As you can see, this is a color rendering of the site landscaping plan that was submitted as part of the application. You can see towards, north is towards the top of the page. You can see Club Boulevard entering into the circle. And you can see the lot in question is central to the exhibit. The front entry drive, you can see coming across the tan building that is the clubhouse building in the center of the, center of that lot. There are two parking areas proposed, one to the west, which is 21 spaces along Brielle Terrace. Absolutely. So we have two parking areas being proposed, one along Brielle Terrace, which has 21 spaces, and one along Avalon Lane, which has 40 spaces. So we had a total of 61 parking spaces, which meets the ordinance requirement for a clubhouse. And we do have four handicap spaces, meeting the ADA requirements for the building. And the parking currently being proposed is 23 feet off the curb line of both Avalon Lane and Brielle Terrace, or 12 feet off of the lot line at that location. So that is the variance being proposed tonight. There is, there is a requirement for non-residential zone to have no parking within the front yard. So 25 feet would be required. So we're deficient 13, 12 feet. I'm sorry, 13 feet because we're 12 feet off. So also being proposed is an amenity package for the property. The first thing that I would point out, you have Clubhouse Drive, which connects Avalon Lane to Brielle Terrace and goes in the front of our clubhouse building. There is a green area in between the circle and that drive. And there we are proposing two fountains, six and a half foot high, each one, they're roughly 70 feet long. And we do have, I'll introduce A3, which depicts those fountains. So this is A3, is the color details of the entry fountain, pergola, and trash enclosure. So the applicant has spent a lot of time perfecting this.
You're referring to now A3. Is that, okay, it's now up on the screen. Okay. So we're now synchronized. Thank you.
So the applicant and our team went around a lot on this to try to get an exceptional feature that will capture the eye as you come up to the circle. And you can see that it is attractively landscaped, both in front and in back. And six and a half foot feature with a larger waterfall in the middle and then two smaller ones on the side. So there's two of those within the site plan, which is the first feature. There we go. And then going back to Exhibit A2, the color rendering of the site plan. Then I'll go through the other features. So there is a deck along the clubhouse, in the rear of the clubhouse, which has a fire pit, a pergola, has ADA access down to a lower deck where the pool is located. There is a pool that has 1,700-square-foot area. It has two lap lanes, an ADA lift, and a zero entry area. Also adjacent to the pool is some additional shade structures, as you see here, which are also depicted within the exhibits that I have, both here and adjacent to a playground or tot lot area, which is to the west of the deck. Also featured, just to the east of the deck area, is two pickleball courts. Also featured, just to the east of the deck area, is two pickleball courts. So you can see that this is a recreational area just beyond just the clubhouse. There is also a shade structure associated with that, with the pickleball courts. Then you'll see just to the east of the pickleball courts is another structure that is the post office for the development. And so that's where people throughout the development will be getting their mail. You can see, this was done on purpose to have all these features very close together. You know, the applicant wanted to make it accessible for everyone and make sure that pedestrian-wise, you can get to all locations through the sidewalk system there. The other feature that's just to the top of the page is there's 75 by 100 multipurpose, just regular natural turf field area for whatever the residents might want to do, soccer or any other game that they would like to play. And we do have details of all of those features. so this exhibit is the color details of the mailbox shade and pool equipment enclosures. So you can see the shade enclosures will have canvas roof and be open air underneath and have an area where people can go and congregate. The post office box, you can see the arrangement, is basically just a gabled roof with some attractive pillars with stone veneer. There's, I believe, six rows of boxes for people to go in, and I believe there's 30, 30 of these boxes with the ability to have 16 mailboxes, so that gives you, there's 465 units, so all of them will be able to house in this structure. You have a pool enclosure, which will have vinyl fence around it. One of the questions is the color of the vinyl fence, which hasn't been chosen yet. Looking at something that'll match the architecture. And so that's pretty much it on the amenities. We are not proposing any signs as part of this application. Everything that we proposed previously with the subdivision plan is not part of this application. So all the features I propose, I would say are accessory structures at this point. In terms of lighting, we created a lighting plan using the same fixtures that we had throughout the subdivision, 12-foot-high decorative colonial fixtures to keep at the rural development theme. And we use the same, I guess it was either a variance or a waiver for maintaining the foot candles on the roadway, so we met the average of .4 foot candles maintained within the roadway. But there's also another section of the ordinance that requires a minimum of half a foot candle within the roadway, so for that, we're asking for the same relief as we had with the streets within the subdivision. In terms of the landscape plan, referring back to the rendered site plan, go back to the second exhibit or the first exhibit. Thank you. So in terms of the landscape plan, we have ornamental trees and bushes along Clubhouse Drive, we have our shade trees along both Avalon Lane and Brielle Terrace. We're asking for the same waiver with regard to the 50-foot tree separation within the development, and for the same reasons we asked for that waiver in the original subdivision plans in certain locations. We needed access through to be able to see, for instance, the clubhouse. When you come to the center drive, wouldn't it make sense to completely block that view coming into the clubhouse? Why build a beautiful building that you can't see? But I could say that we met the spirit of the ordinance, and we had the same amount of trees that would be required for that 50-foot separation. So that's all I had on the site plan. I believe all the drainage was addressed in the subdivision plans. We're not proposing any major changes to that, just inlets connecting into the existing In terms of the relief, so we identified that we need relief from Section 244-19I1, which is a parking in the front yard setback, where 25 feet being required, 12 feet.
Can you point that out off the ground?
Sure. So we can see this landscaped edge here, so it is the right-of-way line that runs through there along Avalon Lane. That separation between where the parking is, is 12 feet, where technically 25 feet would be required. And that same relief is required along Brielle Terrace. There's 23 feet from the curb, but only 12 feet from the right-of-way. So in terms of, I guess it wasn't qualified as a planner.
I was just going to jump in. We qualified you as a P.E., but if you can give your qualifications as a professional planner.
Yes, I've been reviewing zoning ordinances and providing planning testimony since 1998. I've been a licensed planner in the state of New Jersey. Obviously, I'm qualified as an engineer first, so planning is, I don't have specific education in planning, but I've been practicing it for over 20 years.
And your license is in full force and effect in New Jersey, is that correct?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. But please proceed with your planning justification for the variance.
Absolutely. So specifically for the variance that we're seeking tonight, we would not call this a C1 hardship variance, as Mr. Peters had in his report, it would really be a C2. And the burden of proof on that end is that the benefits of the deviation from the zoning ordinance would outweigh the detriments, that there is no substantial impairment to the public good or the zone plan. In this case, I think the deviation specific to especially the Avalon Lane. So when I was talking about the site plan, at this location, we had mentioned that the pickleball courts specifically wanted to be very close to where the pool deck was and where the clubhouse and the upper deck were. And we also had the post office. In the post office, we went through a series of iterations with the post office. They approved it here, this was the location that they wanted it. And because of that, we have the constraint of if we were to move this back 13 feet, we would have a problem with that whole, that whole arrangement of where the post office is. We would end up having to move the pickleball court towards the north end of the property. Now, the problem with that is, once you put the pickleball courts up here, when we talked to the applicant, we got very specific with the site plan. Now, the footprint that we had and the parking lots are the same as what we showed in the original subdivision application, understood that we didn't apply for a site plan approval at that time, but that was the same arrangement. But if you look at our subdivision plan, you can see here is where we originally had the pickleball courts. And the problem with that is that you have a row of houses where that, those pickleball courts would be right in the backyard of those folks. So the applicant, that was the other reason, not only just the access, but wanted to make sure that we didn't have the pickleball courts towards those backyards, we're just at the top of the page on this exhibit. So we thought it was a better planning tool to keep that setback that we have and keep that arrangement close. And we believe that advances some of the purposes of zoning, specifically to provide adequate light air and open space, to allow those uses to exist at that location, also provide, promote a more desirable visual environment, which is another purposes, one of the purposes of zoning. It's also desirable to keep the pickleball area closer to the clubhouse so that it can be screened and incorporated in the overall landscaping plan. So you can see there's a big package around that, and the, you know, the only folks that it would affect at this point would be across the street. Also to encourage planned unit developments, which incorporate the best features of design and layout of residential, commercial, industrial, and recreational development to a particular site. So the parking setback deviation is actually not in the PM URD zoning requirements. This is a standard for a non-residential development. So most of the time, that's applied to a commercial lot that exists, that has existing neighbors, that they're coming in and must meet that setback requirement. Since this is a planned residential unit development, location of the parking for the clubhouse, which actually serves this community, should have that flexibility of design to be convenient for the residents. Since the clubhouse is centrally located along the two roads, the front setback is therefore applied to the entire frontage. Because what we're dealing with is if this was in technically a side yard, this would not be a variance. So from that standpoint, we believe it does advance some of the purposes of zoning. If we had to comply with it, we would also have to put in additional pavement, have additional soil disturbance. So from that standpoint, we would also say this would advance the more efficient use of land, is another purpose of zoning. So with the site design features described, we believe that the benefits outweigh the detriments of this variance. In terms of the negative criteria, as previously stated, the clubhouse parking setback is not in the PM URD requirements, therefore the setback for parking on this use was not envisioned in the zoning ordinance for this type of element. So based on these observations, we believe that the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to the zone plan or the zoning ordinance. That's all I have on the variance.
That's fine, if you want to turn your attention to the review letters?
Yeah, absolutely.
Before you do, let's explore this variance a little bit. And Mr. Peters, I'd like you to weigh in on this.
As it relates to the setback along the right-of-way, a couple of things from a practical perspective. If this, if all of these roads were owned by a homeowner association, it wouldn't need a variance. It would be a design standard. So from a practical planning perspective, it's a line on a drawing. So from a physical planning perspective, we normally want 12 to 18 feet, sort of as a safety barrier between the curb and the parking area, which they have here. However, because of the way the project was laid out, there's a line on the drawing. So Mr. LaScavage gave planning testimony, which I believe supports the request. I always, I like to get back to the physical perspective. Is there a negative impact? Is it unsafe to have it the way they have it on the plan? And I don't think so. Mr. LaScavage, there's also landscaping provided in between the areas where the parking lot is closest to the right-of-way. You have landscaping proposed in those areas as well, correct?
That's correct.
So there's also a slim, but a buffer in between the drive aisles and the edge of the parking space. So unbalanced, we don't take any exception to the relief requested. If the board wanted additional space for a particular reason, understand, and it's not going to make the record well, but as this is sort of a rounded frontage lot, if we move things in from the left and right side of the project, we have to move things back to get them to fit. This appears to be a reasonable use of the land for the clubhouse. I would take note that the developer brought this forward. They're the ones who are selling this to residents. So if, quite frankly, while I don't want to speak for the developer, if they thought it wasn't going to work, they'd make it work. I've had an opportunity in my career to be in a number of residential homeowner association communities. This does not appear to be five pounds in a two-pound sack. I would invite debate from the board members on whether or not they feel that this is sufficient, but from not only a planning perspective, I think Mr. LaScavage has given testimony necessary for the board to grant the relief. I think from a physical planning perspective out in the field, I think it meets the intent of our land use ordinance as it relates to safety.
So in your professional opinion, this meets the criteria of a C2 variance?
Yes.
Who will be the question? Question, yes, Mr. Chairman.
One, the landscaping that's on the right hand side, will that buffer lighting of cars for those residences on the right? That looks like they're going to be pretty close. And the landscaping, do you know if that will buffer the
The headlights?
Cars.
Yes.
And the other, is that one spot?
Right there.
Right there.
Yes.
I thought I did.
You did.
Okay, thank you. And the same, if the buffering on the left is a problem, if the buffering on the right for those homeowners.
So I have a question for you with regards to your post office. You have 468 mailboxes, is that right?
465.
65. So I envision people coming home from work and them coming in and stopping at the post office to pick up their mail on their way home, and, you know, during the hours of, let's say, 5:00 to 6:30 or so. And I think there's going to be a lot of congestion of, and something has to be done with those parking spots in front of the post office. If you have an event going on in the clubhouse, if you have people at the pool playing pickleball, a whole thing, and then you have people coming in to pick up their mail as well. And now I know that, you know, it's a planned unit development and encouraging people to walk and so forth to this, but But I just see a lot of congestion in front of the, the post office during that evening rush when people are coming home and want to pick up their mail. So in my opinion, I think the parking spots in front of that should be marked, reserved for 10-minute parking for mail pickup only and excluded from, you know, regular parking. That thought as well.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to ask Mr. LaScavitch, the, the two accessible spots that are located closest to the post office, could they be flipped to the other side of the curb island a little further away? I suspect the number of accessible folks compared to the 465 would be fewer. And I think they'd only have to go another 18 feet. Then we'd have three additional parking spaces that would be in close access or proximity to the post office. Would that be a reasonable alternative?
We have no problem with that.
Do you see my point?
Absolutely. We, we actually talked about, when we initially started talking about the post office, with the post office was having possibly two spots. But from their experience, they, they thought one would work here even. Now, we did also propose a spot for the mail person to park. So we do have that on the site plan as well.
And you have a, a site designated for the, the mail truck or anything for when he comes?
Yes, so he would be right.
That's that gray area, okay. Anyone else? Ms. Campbell?
So we do have, not to interrupt you, I'm sorry, but we do have an architect who would be better suited to answer your question on that.
Chair, just a quick question, and it may be a silly one, you may have gone over this already. The mail service is, is how do folks that live here get their mail?
They would be going to this location.
Every day?
Yes.
That makes absolutely no sense. And, and I'll tell you why. In plan, in, in these types of communities that I've seen, and I'm sure you have a model that you can, you could fix this. There would be, for example, nice decorative brick periodic, maybe there's a, maybe one, two, three, maybe six, what have you, for folks that have their own mailbox throughout the development. The idea that folks are going to go right direct, go to a clubhouse every single day, it's going to drive your clients mad, first of all, I think. My opinion, actually, I should just say, that's my opinion. But it's incredibly inconvenient if the, if there's no mail going through the route or going through the community. Sharing an opinion with you, you'll have people driving into that clubhouse. And, and I'm sorry to pick up on, I didn't think that that's actually what you're thinking about from a planning standpoint. For example, in other, where there's density bonuses or what have you, where you congested, your housing is tight, there are periodic, like, for example, if there's a little roundabouts where there's a cluster of homes, they would have their own mailbox, like that would be for that, say, 10 units. And then there would be another development, I'm thinking frankly, my own development. There's a very attractive aesthetically pleasing brick, or may, maybe whatever the elements are that, that tie to the design. And you know exactly what I'm talking about, I'm sure. Why aren't you doing that? Because you know what I'm talking about.
We, we, we do, and we can answer that question, and with the chair's permission, it'll take probably 15 seconds. We can have Mr. Bavino come up and be sworn. He worked directly with the postmaster, and he has the answer to the question that's been raised.
Thank you.
So if we got Mr. Bavino sworn, yeah.
Mr. Bavino, thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation to the applicant?
Thomas P. Bavino, B as in boy, O V as in Victor, I N O. And I work for the property owner and the developer who will be selling the lots to D.R. Horton. Okay, so the answer to your question, Mr. Wall, believe me, I spent numerous visits with the Jackson postmaster. And for a host of reasons, he was very reluctant to do what you suggest. The best I could do was pot, I mean, he really wanted a central location, it has to do with labor, convenience, efficiencies. He made a whole list of this is where the postal service is taking us. I tried to even get him to split two sides of the community. So to have two of those, one on the left side, one on the right, so at least it alleviated, excuse me, split the community in two. But this was a trend that he was pretty adamant about telling us in terms of his approval, his sign off, this is what he wanted. Now, I'm certainly welcome if you want, and I want to talk to him again, but I think this is direction.
I would just say, you know, most folks are aware that the postal service is in a bit of a death spiral, unless they figure that out, right? With pension costs and benefit costs and things like that, but I think they're making their problem your problem.
I, I agree. I, I think that he's dictating to you what makes it easier for him and more efficient for him and not taking into account how the residents are.
Right.
Having to operate on.
Now, I should point out, for parcel delivery, that, that will go to the door, to the door of each of the units, right? For all the Amazon-type deliveries, whether 2P S, postal, et cetera. But for daily mail, this is what he, and he told us it had to be covered for weather, so their workers weren't stuck in the rain, so to speak. Now, he, we, in, in terms of, in large apartment communities, they usually have a centralized location. The issue that complicates it is they walk, right? They're in the building, they can walk to the central location. Here, they're in vehicles, so.
I just think you're going to have a mess of congestion there during those magic hours or in the evening.
I think what we discussed was, we start with this, and if we have to split it into two, maybe we split it into two. But I don't know that I'm going to get the post service's approval without, without ending up in something that looks like that. So again, I'm, I'm, I'm certainly welcome to have Mr. Wall and I revisit this with, with the post.
Maybe the postal master wants to come here and talk guns.
But that, yeah, that's my answer, I mean, that's.
Just a, thank you, just a quick question for the attorney. Is this akin to a, a, the, a bus stop at a development where they're, where they would, I mean, maybe it's not a fair analogy, but within their world, they will, they, they would set up the appropriate bus stops in the development within reason. And in this case, they would set up appropriate mail delivery service within reason. And then the question is, is this considered within reason? I just find it, because I think it blows up your parking is right.
Yeah, that's why.
Right, that's why I was starting, you know.
So, so it's interesting. I'm going to, along those same lines, I'll ask the applicant. So I think the board, right, as a preface, the board could take note that having a specific discussion over where post office delivery, regular mail is not often, doesn't often occur here. This applicant, at some level, for whatever reasons, has gone further than many in making this determination already. But the question becomes, what happens if the board simply doesn't like this and says, no, you got to split it up or you have to do that? Do you go back to the post office and then have to come back for an amendment?
Has to be worked out somewhere or another. I mean, we, we, you know, it's hard for us to serve two masters, you know? We, we go to the postmaster and ask him the question, and he, we got the answer. We understand the board's concerns. But I, I would like to add one more thing to the record, if we could have Mr. Fetschow sworn in. He has one more piece of the puzzle to add, so the board's fully informed on this issue. So we could have Mr. Fetschow sworn.
Mr. Fetschow, thank you for raising your right hand. You solemnly swear or affirm that the testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, hold truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your affiliation to the applicant?
Robert Fetschow, spelled F E C S O, I'm a vice president with D.R. Horton. I've been developing in the state of New Jersey the last 30 years. I've probably constructed over 25,000 units so far. What happened in 2016, it came down as a federal mandate that there was no more, even on my existing communities, even on my existing communities, we, on single families, townhouses, and apartments, everything had to be centralized. They sent out details from the government, the U.S. Postal Service, here's how big it has to be. Then you had to go to the local postmaster and have them at, you asked them whether they wanted to put it on the site. Even on my single families, big lots, singles, they're all centralized now. There's no more curbs pickup for any new developments and not even existing developments. Your planner, your engineer will know this as well, you can't have curbside pickup anywhere. So we got to pick a location, serve the local postmaster, and that's the area we picked. I wanted to pick it up like Mr. Bavino testified and break it up on two sides of the community, put some in the back. Then the postmaster came back here locally and said, no, we want it one centralized location. That's right what we do, we, we did. And we also inside the clubhouse, which you'll see later when, when Mr. Feinberg gets up, for large packages, in case there's not enough room, we have a postal pickup inside of there for, for larger deliveries.
I thought you just, sorry, sir, can't help myself, but there was just testimony that the larger deliveries, Amazon and stuff, would go to this.
Yeah, I'm saying, but if they, if it was a flowover, we have an area, people aren't home, people go on vacation, they can be delivered inside the clubhouse. But you don't want during Christmas or during a holiday season where no one's around, the package, it's a townhouse community. You can't have them all stacked up there. So we have an alternative to put them inside the clubhouse as well. Thinking ahead, because we have this happening in other, some of our other communities.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Fetschow, you say that we've, we've gone, the, the post office has gone this way. Can you describe some of the projects that you have that have utilized this and, and your real-world experiences, both positive and negative? I've been to one of your projects down in Delaware. It's a little smaller than this, they have it, it's brand new, I've seen it. I said to the, my friends who bought there, I said, I've been getting my mail delivered to my front door for 58 years. And they're like, it's just not that big a deal, because they knew it when they bought it.
Yes.
So I guess, help the board members understand the idea, it's obviously far enough, the post office isn't going to deliver our mail to our front door anymore. Like, like the milkman doesn't anymore. But can you explain some of the, what happens if it's a problem? What, what, what positives of negatives have you seen in implementing this that would help the board understand it and grasp the idea?
Well, on this type of development, I don't think it would be a problem. But the problems I've seen with it, where we don't have a big clubhouse area, open space area, where I probably put these gang boxes along the road. So then you have people, like, between units or between townhouse buildings, like, if you look at, I don't have my location pointer, like, between the buildings. It make us put them here a lot of times between the buildings, and people all gang up there along the roadways trying to get the mail. And the post, and also the postman, that makes me put a big concrete pad here, take, and then you can't put the transformers in. It's a real issue. So here we have the benefit to have this open space to put it in this area with the parking areas.
So people aren't along the, the main roadway?
Yeah.
The fire and emergency access route, and get them off of that by putting them into the community area, so to speak.
Because what it does is just jam up the roads, because they all line up on the road, pick up the mail. Like you said, they're going to come home all at the same time. But now they're blocking people from getting in the driveway. That's what I see the detriment of doing this. I like to be delivered right to my house, that's what I want to do. It's a lot less expensive. I put a little mailbox for $100 in front of everyone's house to build a structure like I'm building here. But I've, you're going to do it, you might as well do it nice, that's why I have it covered, that's why it's lit, that's why you have stone pillars. So it blends in, all the mailboxes are black gunmetal, a dark color like that, they're not cheap aluminum in, and it's going to hit out. These are, I mean, it's a really nice, we have some different stuff.
So generally speaking, the residents understand that at some point in time?
Yeah, right up front. It's also in the, sorry, Mr. Peters, it's also disclosed to them at point of sale, it's not going to be curbside pickup. It's going to be a gang mailbox mail delivery system.
And, and I guess the reason, I apologize.
I understand with the, them knowing upfront, that's part of the deal when they sign up, that's all well and good. I still have, think you have a situation between the people picking up all their mail. You're going, you're going to have a mess there.
Well, I have another community down in Barnegat Township, which is a similar size, similar sized clubhouse. The clubhouse is bigger, it's 9,000 square foot for 400 units. And I have, and we don't have that type of problem. I understand, I understand your concern, and we just don't, it's just, we're not having that issue. I have the issue when I have it up and down the roadways, if they're even, if the postmaster allowed that, that's where I see the issues.
Have you ever built one of your developments with this type of setup?
Yes.
And, and it works?
It worked.
A postmortem on the?
It worked. What doesn't work is what I described along the roadways, that's, that's been giving us problems.
Now, what I would like to add for the record is, you know, people are going to drive by, if it's, if it's packed, they're just going to keep driving, right? And you, you're going to start to find a rhythm where people work odd hours, and they're going to go when no one's there. I mean, our generation was spoiled to get the mail every single day. You have people working home more now. So again, to try and move forward, I think, I think Mark, I think we should, we have section one approved of 186 homes. So we're asking the board to consider, we can certainly talk to the postmaster, but if they're.
Pretty firm.
Thank you, I was, yeah, if they're, they're not negotiable.
Yeah.
Can we at least try the 186 lots, see how it performs, see how human behavior sort of adapts? And it may not be as bad. It's not like there's a dinner bell and everybody's going there at the same time to pick up their mail. And then let's see what happens if we have to split it into two, I don't think you're.
I'm agreeable to that, let's see how it worked. If it doesn't work at the first section, we can go back to the postmaster, and his delivery people know it's not working as well. I'd put another one in, and then in section two. I'm not objecting to that, I'm just trying to satisfy everyone, the board, and also what's required by the federal government and the U.S. Postal Office system.
So how many spots are you going to designate for mail pickup and short-term parking only?
Well, we're going to have the one for the mail truck, and I can leave five, six, which is a determination, it's a guess at this point. How many do you want me to have? You tell me, I'll.
Well, it is a guess, you know.
Yeah.
And it's a hard guess with 560, or 465 mailboxes. So how many people are going to come simultaneously to?
I, I can't, Mr. Chairman, I, I can't give you that number. I know at the active adult community I referenced in my Sea Crest, Pines, and Barnegat, everyone's home. Most people are home, and I don't have a problem there. I don't think I'm going to have a problem here, but let's revisit it. If we have a problem, I'm going on the record, and Mr. Bavino went on the record, we'll go back with petition, and if we need a second one, it's phase two. And we'll find some open space in the later section to have another group area to put it, a gang area to put it. But it's going to be gang, there's nothing I can do about that.
Yes.
First, I don't give any order or preference to, most of all, the subcontractors.
Excuse me?
The subcontractors deliver mail. So I don't give them any order or preference. All right, that solves all the problems. It's at 465 minutes, correct?
Yes.
Eight hours in a day, means 58 visits, with one per minute per hour. I suggest it, divorce it, half on one side, half on the other. That is men, you can't look me in the eyes and tell me I'm wrong. I understand you've got the experience of building companies. My suggestion to you, sir, is divorce it, have, you're on a land use board, post office, multiple post office. I understand what they want, like if you got, like if you do. So make this work so that it's not a cumbersome thing, so that you don't have to wait for a month, come back later to sort this out. Parcel that thing, let's step forward and take proactive steps.
Excuse me? Go ahead, I never talked to my.
Let's take a proactive step and split it half and half.
That's what I wanted to do in the first place.
Yeah, I was going to say.
We both did, yeah.
Mr. Postmaster, thank you very much for your suggestion. However, the land use board wants this, they're the ones that are reviewing it, renting garrets, providing the hearing. That's the way it goes.
I understand.
Can we get a letter, can we get a letter from the planning board that we can bring to the postmaster?
I have no problem with that, as long as you will give me a letter, or have one of your professionals give me a letter, saying that I could take that back, and say, this is what I had to do to get the approval, this is what they want, they will not approve just one gang system. If I can get, or from your attorney, whoever, so Mr. Vino could go back to him and say, we tried, we can't do this. He calls for a gang mail, but it doesn't say anywhere in this, what was mandated to us, it only had to be one, I need to split it. Is that your desire to have it split? I'll do that.
Okay. Mr. Vino, you had a comment?
No, that was, he addressed it.
Okay.
We just want to work together with the planning board.
That's a practical view. I have a daughter who lives in a lot of communities. They use this system. Most of the people are working people. However, I never know what's the problem with this system. People come and call them, they, they get in their own habits. Some come in the evening, some on the next morning. There, there's no big rush. Mail example, they're more junk than real. So, people are not used to it. So, she and her neighbor seem to have no issue with this new system. They're used to it, they've had it since they were born. They walk up in the evening, they walk, they fly by in the morning, they finish up on it nine o'clock at night, six o'clock at night, they all seem to get it. So, I, I think we have to start realizing that it's a new day, and it's a new society. People aren't, get used to it in their face. So, I don't have a problem, but I can understand some of it.
Ms. Campbell, I think the problem that I see is the congestion. Not, not necessarily...
Well, people adjust to the situation as it is, and they, they don't, they're not as tired to the mails as people of our generation are. Because the mail is not what it used to be. There's not, there's more junk than there.
I agree, I don't check my mail every day. I get complaints, I don't empty the box enough.
I think I have a compromise that hopefully will satisfy this gentleman. Maybe we build half of the bank. I don't think you want us to waste the money on the whole thing, have to come back later and split it in two. Can we build half now? 186 lots? We're coming back to the planning board in a year. For the remaining...
Tom, just so the record's clear, when you say build half, build half of what?
Build half of the...
Required boxes?
The required post office that's shown on the plan. See how it works. We're gonna come back here, past 186 lots, we will have real live data as to what's going on there, and then we can either decide, and I say we, but it's your decision, to either continue finishing building the second half of it on that side, splitting it in two, or even, as Mr. Fetchout, I don't want to speak to you, but there's another space in the community for a third bank, we, we'll know more information, and it'll be based on real human behavior. Does anybody object to that idea?
More do you have something to add?
I agree with what Mr. Vino said. I have a question about that. Why I think that we'll skip the early, no. I know the words is dead, but I'll be...
Right? Anyone else?
I think it's a positive question.
Okay.
Thank you.
So, just to be clear, so we're gonna build 15 of the units, we have 30 times 16, so we're gonna do 15 times 16.
You, you might, I've lost everything you said.
So, there is 30 of these units, each one of these units holds 16 boxes. So instead, we're gonna build 15 of those boxes.
Your, your client said he's gonna provide half or 186. That arithmetic's your guy's problem, not the board's.
Matt solves all problems.
But, but what I'm saying is the 15 would be more than 186.
Okay.
Well, so, all right. 30 total is proposed? Build 15 of them. Solves the problem.
Mm-hmm.
That's Matt.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Cleveland?
Mr. Cleveland? Just, just, just real quick, as far as giving the applicant something that he can go back to the postmaster, you know, with, should the board, you know, grant the application, maybe the resolution can have a finding of that we struggled with this, and this is what we came up with, so at least they have something to go back to the postmaster with.
We would welcome that, that would help us.
I would like that, I would like to go back sooner or later to resolve this issue, I don't want to leave it open.
Okay. Mr. Gordon?
That's fine, okay, makes sense.
Good.
And it's exactly what happened.
Um, your testimony? You have more witnesses?
What we do, I just want to make sure, Mark, is there anything else on the review letters that you want to address, or are we in a will comply status? Is there anything that you need to comment on in the two review?
No, we would agree to both letters. I think we gave the testimony on the variances and the waivers, and the only other thing, we'll agree to the charging stations, and we would need two, so we'll add that to the plan.
Okay. All right, before you bring up, uh, Mr. Cleveland?
The charging stations, well, some of the feasibility study, were there?
Feasibility for the solar.
Okay. Okay, before you bring up your next witness, let's take five minutes away, we've been going since 7:30, so.
Nine, 10.
Mr. Chairman, our next witness is our architect, Mr. Bill Feinberg, if we can have him sworn.
Mr. Feinberg, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and through the chairman of credentials?
Okay, my name is William Feinberg, F.E.I.N.B.E.R.G. My address is 1010 Haddonfield Berlin Road in Voorhees, New Jersey. I'm a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey since 1992. Received my architectural degree from Drexel University. I've given testimony before boards on similar projects throughout the state of New Jersey over 150 different municipalities. I think back in the early 90s, I was before this board. Thank you very much.
Bill, I'm going to turn it over to you. If there are exhibits you're going to utilize, we're starting with exhibit A5. If you could take us through the architectural proposal.
Okay, so on the easel is exhibit A5. On the top is the floor plan for the clubhouse. It's dated November 20th, 2020. It represents the floor plan that was shown on the engineer's plan. And the front of the clubhouse is located at the bottom of this exhibit. You come through the front doors. You do have an office for a management office, about 200 square feet. We also have a package room. I know there's been extensive discussions earlier regarding the post office. We do have a big lounge area that's separated by a fireplace, a kind of a quiet lounge area towards the front of the clubhouse and a more active with televisions, kind of set up like a sports bar, but it's not a bar. We also have a 1,200 square foot fitness center that's on the, on the easterly side of the building. We also have located mechanical sprinkler rooms out the back of the clubhouse facing the pool. We have a pergola with a fire pit. We also have a game room which is located at the front of the clubhouse, about 400 square feet. We have accessible bathrooms that are for both the use of the clubhouse and for the use of the pool. There, the engineer's plan showed a sidewalk that came into a side entry and a hallway that leads you back to the bathrooms. And then we have about a 600 square foot multipurpose room facing out to the pool area. Why don't we go to the next exhibit? So A6 is the front and rear elevation of the clubhouse. That's dated December 8th, 2021. The lower exhibit represents the clubhouse front as you, as you come up through the circle and approach the front of the clubhouse. The clubhouse is about 29 feet, 6 inches tall to the highest point of the roof, which is this point right here. The front of the clubhouse and part of the side of the clubhouse, which I'll demonstrate in a minute, has a standing seam metal roof. We do have vinyl board and battened siding. There's a foot, 14 foot high ceiling, so we have large windows on the front, large glass doors. We have transom windows on top of the front entrance and the rooms inside. The elevation at the top is the rear elevation, so this would be facing out towards the pool. Again, what we have located on the rear is a pergola. There's a pair of doors that bring you out from inside the clubhouse out to this area, then down into the pool, pool area. Why don't we go to the next exhibit? Which should be A7. On the screen, the lower part of that exhibit is the right side elevation, which will be facing out to the pickleball courts. As you can see, we've continued the materials from the front elevation with a cultured stone. We also have the vertical board and battened siding. And then our main roof area is the area that is over top of the fitness center and the great room. And the opposite side, this is the door that brings you in from the pool, which is out back, and into the bathroom area. We've also continued the same materials around the left side elevation. Actually, that represents everything that we've submitted to the board, including these color renderings for this evening's testimony.
Bill, there's an earlier question on solar. Is the applicant in a position to comment on what might happen solar-wise?
Yeah, so we go back to the floor plan. Go back to exhibits. The front of our building faces south, so the preference would be not to have solar panels in the front of the building. We do have two large roof areas that are split down the middle, essentially a left half and a right half. The east to west is almost directly across. We could look at the potential for adding solar to that roof or have it solar ready so that our, we'd have conduits up to the roof back to our electric panels.
Thank you.
Ms. Campbell?
Um, have certain, well, one or anything to? Slides to where the side of the building would come, the entry is to the clubhouse development. Living in an environment where I, where I'm functioning with this type of a clubhouse, and we considered perhaps having two exterior, or the one exterior bathroom, because getting people walking through that hallway, wet, pink, and sliding slippery, of that, of that, to that side view.
That would be right here on this, right here on this exhibit on the board. We have not looked at adding bathrooms because of, yeah, right here.
Just adding doorway into one, maybe adding one bathroom exterior you thought, because that, that's where it dangerous walking into those, uh, into that hallway.
Well, we can go back to the floor plan. Our experience is that we've isolated this hallway. We obviously want to give access to anybody that's using the club room. And then coming into the pool, it's probably about 10-foot distance into this area right here. We could look at doing something different with the change in flooring materials. So instead of running carpet through that area, running a slip resistant tile would probably be the best way to go.
That's going to be initially children walking in.
Right. We can look at that as, as a solution. You're welcome.
Anyone? Yes, anyone?
Yeah, I see there's no, there's nothing there for cooking or anything, so you don't anticipate having a, if somebody wants to have something with food, they got to bring a caterer.
That's correct. If you go back to the floor plan, we do have a sink located here. There's a dishwasher under this counter and a refrigerator, but we're not allowing any cooking. Has to be prepared food and it has to be just, you can, you know, bring it warm, you know, to the clubhouse. We prefer not to have anybody cooking in there.
So that would be in case somebody wanted to have a covered dish or something, if people, they just bring stuff in, warm it up?
That's correct. But we're not providing any stove top, any microwaves, none of that.
Anyone else?
Chairman? Yes. Maybe from Mr. Scavage, but um, the pool equipment, maintenance, chemicals, is there any provisions for storage?
I believe there's an enclosure shown on the site plan. Mark, is that the vinyl fenced enclosure?
Yes.
I think that's located, what, to the west of the pool?
It's, it's between the clubhouse and the tight lot? I'm looking, it looks like it could be some type of enclosure. It's not really labeled, but it's between the clubhouse and the tight lot.
Yes.
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 And the mechanicals are in there also?
For the pool equipment, yes. And chemical storage would be there also. It'd be in a locked cabinet. It would be in the same location.
Anyone? Okay.
Thank you.
No further witnesses, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Anyone from the public that wishes to comment about this application, please step up to the microphone. Sir, thank you for raising your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm that testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Can you kindly give us your full name, spell your last, and your address, please?
Ed Bannon, B.A., double N, O.N., 22 Abercrombie Court, Jackson.
Mr. Chairman.
I do have a problem with where they locate the game room down in the lower left corner to their office. There's a lot of noise generated in those game rooms. I, I come from one of these communities. And to have that kind of noise volume that comes out of a pool room that close to the office, that's right in the middle of the bottom there, I, I think that would be disturbing to the people working at office. Thank you.
Anyone else? Anyone else go forward? All favor?
Hi.
All right, okay. Any other questions? Comments, concerns?
Quick question about the food situation. I realize you don't want a full service kitchen there. Or is it a thought that you might do, say, lunch trucks on premises during certain hours of the day when people might want to eat as opposed to being their own? Because I've seen that happen before. Is that a thought or is that not thought about?
Of food trucks?
Food trucks to show up at, say, 11 o'clock to 2 o'clock so people can get food, eat it on premises, but it's not cooked on premises?
The only food trucks that would appear on this property would be during construction, so we would stipulate that there'd be no food trucks during the occupancy that would serve the residents. So the answer is no. There'd be no food trucks.
I don't have a problem with the food trucks being there, but it means that you're not cooking on premises. So you don't have to worry about all the details of storage, cleanliness and all that. It's, it's a service, not a bad thing.
We understand. At this point, we're not proposing any food trucks or any cooking on premises.
May I ask you, just to follow, who, remind me, I apologize, are you transferring Title 39 rights to the main roads, to the municipality or the HOA going on? I don't remember, I apologize.
The, the answer is yes. They're private roads and we will consent to Title 39 jurisdiction.
Okay, anyone else? No? Okay. Any closing comments?
No, Mr. Chairman. We think this is going to be a beautiful amenity for the, for the community and we would urge the board to grant preliminary final site plan approval as well as the variances and waivers that were discussed.
Anyone? Walk off.
Mr. Dolan?
Yes.
Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein?
Yes.
Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming?
Yes.
Mr. Herring?
Yeah.
Mr. Hudek?
Yes. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Lastly, we have Block 7309. Okay. Lastly, we have Block 7309, Blocks 12 and 13, Jackson Project LLC.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, Salvatore Alfieri, on behalf of the applicant.
Hi. Just have our professionals lead off, and, oh, sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Lee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is an application carried from December 20th. It involves an 11,300 square foot office building. There's a 4,700 first floor, 3,600 second floor. There's also a 3,000 rooftop terrace area and a 503, 533 square foot bulkhead. I'm not really exactly sure what a bulkhead is, so it's testimony from the applicant on the specifics of that. There is still the variance relief required for division on the area as well as lock depth. Front setback to the building's balcony, 60 feet required and 37 feet provided. And also a height of variance. Height of limits can be exceeded by four feet for power pits and elevator mechanicals. And the applicant is proposing a six feet, six foot in excess of that height requirement. There's also a property line setback of 10 feet required, 20 feet, 20 feet required, 10 feet provided for the residential parking area setback. That's testimony from the applicant, yes, with revised plans. That's all at this point.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Our office has a report dated February 22nd of this year. It appears that the architects' plans and the engineers' plans may not match. We should get on the record clearly what is being proposed with the application. There was a turning vehicle plan shown, what appears to be a trash truck. We'd like them to provide one that indicates a fire truck. We'd ask the applicant to provide testimony regarding the revisions and compliance with the two professionals' reports. And that's it for now. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. As the board professionals indicated, we were here in December at that meeting. There was a good discussion about many of the issues that are involved in this project, including solar, the architectural design, EV parking spaces, the parking under the building, et cetera. We've attempted to address all of those comments through revised engineering and architectural plans. Graham McFarland was our engineer and planner of testimony witness at the last meeting, and he's here again this evening.
So thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mr. McFarland. You solemnly swear or affirm testimony, information, questions, or comments you're about to present before the board represent the truth, whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
You've been previously sworn and qualified as both a engineer and planner, correct?
Yes.
And Graham, we, Sean and I have us leaving off at exhibit A8 at the last hearing. Which exhibit are you going to be referring to so you could summarize the plan revisions that were made?
Well, I had, I had sent in new exhibits. I had started them at A6, so maybe we need to just renumber those. Anthony, if you can pull up the second set you got, which started with A6, which I guess is now going to be changed. I guess I must have lost a couple in, in submission here.
Did you pre-mark them?
I did. So that's the revised site plan, which I had, I had identified in, as A6 in the package that we sent to the board for presentation tonight.
Revision date?
That's the site plan revised, February 4th of 2022.
So that would be A9 now?
That's going to change A9, okay. So that's the revised site plan that shows the changes we made to the plan. The changes we made generally involve reworking the parking on the left side of the building to account for the building columns that are required for the overhang. Also to address Mr. Peters' concerns about depth of the parking stalls up against the building. If the board recalls, we had some discussion about that at the last meeting. We've added, there's, there's a detail over here on the left side of this exhibit. We've added bollards at the end of those parking stalls. And those parking stalls are now an overall depth of 19 feet less the bollards. So the, so the space itself is, it's actually like 18 feet, 4 inches total depth of the parking space, which satisfies ordinance requirement for, for 18 feet. We've also revised the Uh, we've also revised the layout of the parking stalls in the back part of of the building. Uh, the handicap spaces were moved to the back. And we've also added bollards along the curb line in the back to address the concern of vehicles that may overhang that that, uh, that curb line. So the bollards allow for, uh, full width of that sidewalk to be utilized without the vehicle overhanging, uh, onto that sidewalk. There are two safety islands in the back of the building, one on the left side, one at the right side, right side of the building. We were able to get those both to be nine feet, where ten feet is required by your ordinance. I believe we originally had them as, uh, six feet when we first came with the application. So I believe that's a very, uh, very de minimis waiver request to have those safety islands nine feet instead of, uh, instead of ten feet. And we've also added a loading space, uh, loading and delivery space, um, for for deliveries that will be made, that were made to the office. As to the floor area of the building, Mr. Peters, uh, pointed out a slight discrepancy in the tabulation of the floor areas. And as we, as we sit here tonight, I believe that the final numbers in accordance with with ordinance requirements are, uh, four thousand six eighty-eight, uh, GFA on the first floor, five thousand nine forty-eight GFA on the second floor, for a total of ten thousand six hundred and thirty-six square feet of gross floor area. That is calculated in accordance with your ordinance where, uh, it's interior space and it and it excludes walls. Uh, when civil engineers, when we calculate floor space, we typically just take the exteriors of the building, use those numbers when we we prepare site plans, uh, in many instances. But your ordinance is very specific that it identifies gross floor area. It defines it as interior space, uh, excluding, uh, areas of walls. So the computation is the ten thousand six thirty-six square feet gross floor area in accordance with Jackson ordinance. And we also have, uh, two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven square feet of the rooftop amenity. And while I'm talking about that, Anthony, maybe you can just go to, uh, go to A eleven for me real quick, and I guess we'll renumber that one also.
So A eleven will be A ten? Yes.
Want that to be A ten now? Let's keep an order there. Okay, so then, uh, what we're gonna refer to A ten, A ten is a roof plan prepared by, prepared by the architect. Uh, based upon discussion from, uh, the board at the last meeting. The board recalls this was the application where we're proposing this, this outdoor space, uh, rooftop space to be utilized, uh, by by the tenants. This plan shows that the front part of the building would be available for that rooftop terrace, for that outdoor amenity space. That total square footage is about two thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven square feet. The plan also shows areas, areas reserved for, uh, for equipment and then areas reserved for solar panels on the, uh, on the back right side of the building. Uh, I'm I'm sure the board recalls that we did get some, some testimony from a neighbor who lived on the, uh, the site immediately to the, to the north. He had concerns about proximity of, uh, the patrons that would be utilizing, uh, the rooftop terraces or occupying that particular area. So we took that into consideration. And again, this plan shows the limitation which is proposed to basically have the front portion of the building available for, uh, for that outdoor, for that outdoor use. Uh, and maybe we'll just go through the other exhibits real quick. So Anthony, if you can go to A seven and then we'll renumber that one. A seven is the revised landscape plan, uh, that was submitted with the, with the package, uh, the same data as the site plan, February fourth revised. Uh, this plan shows the landscaping that's proposed along both, both property lines. We also do have enhanced treatment at the front of, front of the, front of the building. And then this plan also shows some additional, uh, buffering proposed. Uh, Mr. Peters and I had a nice discussion about the ordinance requirements for, uh, for buffering at, at one of our, our last meetings. And he, you know, elaborated the ordinance requirement and the whole procedure for that, uh, for that buffering, which would certainly be adhered to in this application. Uh, basically where an applicant proposes, uh, buffering, there's a process where the town to forester has to review that, that particular landscaping. And if there are areas where, uh, certain trees are dead or diseased or not healthy and they have to be supplemented, the applicant is bound to upgrade those in accordance with with your ordinance. So this plan right now does show some additional plantings being proposed along, along that, uh, along that north property line. But again, with the stipulation that, uh, if it has to be upgraded when we get out in the field and actually, uh, construct the project, the applicant would be, would be bound to, uh, to making those, um, upgrades in accordance with the, uh, the town to foresters', um, you know, recommendations and requirements. And then, uh, quickly, if we can go to, uh, Anthony, what was A eight? Which one will be A twelve? In A twelve, you can see is what I call a bird's eye, uh, view of the building rendering. Uh, you can see that it shows the site, the site ingress on the, uh, east side, the site egress on the, on the west side of of the property. It shows, uh, it shows the proposed building in a three D fashion, again, with the, uh, rooftop amenity occupying the front portion. And you can very clearly hear, see area designated for solar panels and area, uh, reserved for, for, for rooftop equipment. And then Anthony, go to what was A nine, which will now be A thirteen. So that's a, uh, street view of the building. You can get a feel for the, for the materials and the presentation that the, that the building is, uh, going to make, going to make from a, uh, from a street view. It's a, uh, you know, in my opinion, it's a pretty accurate representation of how the building is going to, uh, going to appear. I'm sure there, there may be some, you know, some final adjustment in the, uh, specific colors to be utilized, but I think the, uh, the concept is, is what our client is, uh, is looking to do. Again, that just shows the, the presentation of the building from the, uh, from the street. And then Anthony, let's go to A ten, which will now rename A fourteen. And A fourteen is the, uh, is the building elevation. Uh, this plan shows the, uh, the front and the rear of, uh, elevations of the building. It shows the building height, uh, rooftop height of, uh, thirty-five feet to the, to the flat part of the roof, which is, uh, what the ordinance, um, um, limits, ordinance defines for, for flat roof. It's to the, you know, it's to the main part of the roof, to the, to the flat part of the, uh, of the roof. Uh, I'm not certain about the, uh, what's identified as the, as a bulkhead height. I think we'll, we'll get a little testimony from the architect on that. Our intention was, I I believe, not to ask for or require any relief of building height on that, but I think, uh, Mr. Peters pointed out that he thinks we may need some relief on that. So that, that covers that. As to, uh, review letters that we got, uh, we have a letter from, um, Mr. Cleed dated February sixteenth. He identifies the project, provides factual information to it, uh, just confirmed that we are, are providing curb and sidewalk along County Line Road. Uh, Mr. Cleed does point out, um, Anthony, if you can go back to A nine for me? You're, I'm sorry, the, the new A nine, which was, uh, A six, the site plan? A six that I had submitted, marked as, yeah, uh, maybe, can you zoom in on the site for me a little bit? And Mr. Cleed rightfully points out that, uh, the ordinance does, does have a requirement for additional plantings, uh, street trees along the site frontage. However, you can see on this plan that we have, we do have two driveways, you know, an ingress and an egress, uh, driveway. And associated with each driveway is a site triangle, uh, thirty by a hundred in accordance with county requirements. So we're very limited on any ability to provide additional landscaping or street trees along the site frontage. We do have, uh, our site identification sign located in this area. So we would be asking for a waiver of providing any street trees, uh, on this particular site due to the limitations imposed by the site triangles and also by, um, the up, the upgraded or the enhanced landscaping that we're gonna have, uh, at, at the front of the site. So I believe that will provide a very attractive view for the building. Uh, I touched on the, uh, the safety islands. And that summarizes my, uh, comments related to Mr. Cleed's letter. To Mr. Peters' letter dated February twenty-second. He, of course, identifies, um, a couple of variances that we require. Uh, Mr. Peters' letter does bring up a big question, uh, whether we need variances for the trash enclosure. Um, his letter i- identifies it as an accessory, he, or his letter identified the requirements for an accessory building. And I don't believe the trash enclosure meets the definition of building by ordinance, so I don't believe there's any relief required for the trash enclosure. Uh, it does meet the separation requirements for trash enclosure. Um, so I believe it is, it is in accordance and does not require any relief. I talked about the floor area and believe we've got that clarified. Uh, I've added bollards, uh, along the side and the back of the building, uh, to protect the building and to provide pedestrian safety. Other waivers, uh, we've talked about at the original hearing. Uh, and then Mr. Peters made a recommendation for changing out, uh, one of the species of landscaping, uh, for something a little bit smaller, when that mature growth would not exceed the, uh, the requirements or the ability of the, um, buffer. And just last point is that his letter did, his letter did talk about the need potentially for a minor subdivision. Uh, we are not proposing any subdivision with this application. We're actually proposing a lot consolidation uh, of of these two lots into one. And the Jackson ordinance is very specific uh, that it does a- address that in the definition of subdivision. And it clearly says consolidation is not considered a subdivision, so there's no further action required by, by this board as to any subdivision approval.
Couple of follow-ups. The turning radius or template for a fire truck versus the garbage truck?
Yeah, we'll provide that. What we, what we have on a plan right now, I think, is a thirty-six foot, uh, fire, um, trash truck. We'll provide a template for it, for a fire truck.
And and since the last meeting, there was a meeting with, uh, Ocean County and waivers were granted?
Correct. The county agreed to accept a road widening easement in lieu of a right-of-way dedication. So our proposed setbacks, as Mr. Cleed pointed out, we have thirty-seven feet to balcony and we have forty feet to the, uh, to the foundation. Uh, which does require variance, and we did provide testimony about that at the initial hearing.
And oth- other than that, the, the remaining technical comments contained within those reports are okay and you'll address them?
Yes.
That's all we have of Mr. McFarland.
Okay. Any question? No? Yes, sir.
Just real, real quick, um, Mr. McFarland, we increased the, um, uh, safety island, um, with two.
They're both nine feet. There's a small tangent in there that you, you can't see on that plan. You'll see a five feet and a three feet, and there's a little tiny piece of tangent in there.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Um, just a couple of housekeeping items. Mr. McFarland, the zoning officer gave this a site plan number and called it Site Plan eight forty-six with minor subdivision, lot consolidation. So if the applicant's indicating that they're simply gonna consolidate the lots, we'll just take, I guess jurisdictional note that only a lot consolidation is required.
Correct.
That's correct. There's no subdivision proposed.
But it was docketed by the zoning officer as a minor subdivision.
Understood. I, I'm not sure why.
Um, Graham, Mr. McFarland, can we talk about the dumpster location? A minute? Sure. For everyone, we, we, we talked about where to put the dumpster, how to put the dumpster, where vehicles are gonna come and service it. Um, and Mr. McFarland and his group did what we asked him to do. Um, I hate this layout. One at forty-five degrees. When they open the doors, it's gonna hit two cars, not one, hit two. Can we just? It's one-way circulation, counterclockwise. Put the dumpster in the two locations facing west, facing to the left on the plan. Get rid of those two parking spaces. I think that gives them a, a break even on parking. And have them put a nice dumpster in there, put bollards in front of it so you can set it back. The gate will only travel so far. And at worst, maybe one vehicle might be inconvenienced. This way, two vehicles could be inconvenienced, quite frankly, probably will be. So it, it, it really, I, I don't want to say it, it doesn't matter from a practical perspective. Anyone who deals with a dumpster, feel free to tell me what you think the best layout for this is. I don't think this is the best one, that's all. No pride in authorship, we asked him to do it. So, Arnie, just so I understand, your, your suggestion was to look at eliminating these two, those two parking spaces? If I can, uh, do it with eliminating one, um, I'd be happy to do it if, if, if I can. Um, if you want me to eliminate, or if your suggestion is eliminate the two, we could certainly, uh, we could certainly enter, entertain that. Um, I'd just like to keep the parking where it is if there's any way possible. Uh, the other, the other alternative would be in, in consideration of that, you know, we talked about these, these safety islands. And still, they're, you know, they're, they're both nine feet wide. If they were, you know, cut back to, you know, four feet wide, there's my extra parking space I pick up on, on that aisle. You know, my, my opinion is that, you know, a four-foot safety island is still suitable in the back of this building for this, you know, small site with limited. I'm just trying to figure out the easiest way for a trash truck to come in. Right. I don't want them making K-turns in the back of a parking area, and I don't want the front of the dumpster facing County Line Road. Agreed, right. I, I agree with, I agree with your comments. Uh, we'll certainly take a look at it. I mean, we'll, we'll agree to a condition that says, you know, relocate the dumpster. I, I just want to keep as many parking spaces as, as we can. But other than that, Mr. Chairman, I, I think the applicant followed the lead that they got from the last hearing. Um, and, and I think this is a, a better product than we saw at the last meeting.
Much better. We appreciate that. Okay.
We, we have our architect here who really doesn't have testified except for that one question about the height, and then any questions you have. And Scott Kennel's here for traffic, but it's a county road, it's one way in, one way out. I don't know if traffic is really relevant, but again, he's here for questions. Um, so can we call the architect just to deal with that one height issue?
Sure, let's send anyone, if there's any questions. Okay. Oh, can I speak to the fellow? Sure. Uh, Arnie, do you have a, uh? Really?
Uh, uh, other than dimensionally? No. I think it's a.
No precedent, there's no precedent. Tell them, Sean, there's no precedent between that.
There is no precedent, but, um, through, through the chairman to the professionals, would it make sense, given the comments and the condition, to grant not a nine foot, but maybe an eight foot?
Um, but it won't, it won't let us pick up an extra space now.
One foot won't do anything.
It won't be enough for the space. Yeah.
All right, scratch.
That's fine, yeah. And, and we have two extra spaces, so we have flexibility.
Scratch, okay.
All right, and, um.
Introduce your next word.
Rich?
So raise, thanks for raising your hand. You saw me swear firm testimony, information, questions or comments you're about to present before the board. We represent the truth, whole truth and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Kindly give us your full name, spell your last and your affiliation, and then, uh, you were previously sworn and qualified in this, uh, application as well, correct?
Correct. Church Richard Tokarski, spelled T-O-K-A-R-S-K-I, with the firm of Tokarski Millman Architects located in Wall, New Jersey.
And you prepared the architectural plans that the board reviewed this evening?
Yes, I did.
Okay, and there was a question that Mr. Peters raised about the height as it relates to those features above the ma- main roof line. Can you describe that in a little more detail so we understand?
Sure, um, the roof, top of roof is noted as thirty-one feet, which is the, you know, the top of the flat roof where the roof membrane exists. The top of parapet is at thirty-five feet, and the top of bulkhead is forty-one feet, which is the pertinences of the elevator bulkhead and stair tower that accesses the roof.
And that's in the center?
Um, there's a, you know, there's stairs in the center on the roof and also a secondary stair in the, uh, back. Sure.
Should we put up?
Maybe the architectural roof plan?
It would be eight twelve, maybe? The new A twelve or A fourteen? It would be eight 12 maybe? The new eight 12 or eight 14?
We have the architecturals as the first line item, which is 2052, 2056 West County Line.
The first one that we did tonight.
Eight six. Nope. I think it is 11 or 12.
Now, the roof plan I have is A10, which would be, who knows what it was?
Yeah, there you go.
That's it.
Okay.
Yep. So you see, there's a stair tower back here, stair tower and elevator, bulkhead, which comes up here. And this is a skylight.
So where are the highest points on the roof of those features?
Is the, the stair tower, both stair towers are the same equal height, which is 10 feet above the 31 foot top of roof.
Okay. And then otherwise, as Mr. McFarland was referring to your various exhibits, his testimony was accurate as to what was proposed?
Correct.
Okay. Questions for the architect?
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Tokarski, the bulkhead area, is that just the area of the staircase?
It's the elevator, the staircase, which, you know, includes this basic corridor to the door to get to the roof terrace. And then this is an enclosed stairwell. This is a sky, a skylight, which, you know, comes above the roof, which also has glazing around the exterior to let light into the second floor.
So I'm, I'm trying to do this slowly because I'm an engineer and you guys confuse me sometimes. I understand the need for the bulkhead for the physical build. You have a skylight that's 10 foot higher than the roof of the building?
If you look at the rendering here, so this is unoccupable floor space. It's a double height floor space to the second floor, which has glazing around it and also skylights above.
I'm, I'm really just trying to understand.
Yes.
The answer is yes, right?
Yes.
The answer is yes?
Yes, it's all at the same height.
It's not a bulkhead. It's not necessary.
Correct.
It's not, it's not required under some building code. But the reason I ask is because it would appear that you require variance relief. And at some point, if you're more than 10 feet, 10%, you're at the wrong board. So, so far you're still at the right board. I don't believe there's an exception for things other than mechanicals like the bulkhead. I'm not sure if I asked you, I asked Mr. McFarland. I just, I want to make sure the board understands what they're approving.
Right. I believe it falls on.
It doesn't appear that, that it's just mechanical equipment that creates a bulkhead. There's another archit, and, and I take no exception to the skylight. It's just, when we say it's a bulkhead, the skylight sort of got hidden within it. It's not the bulkhead. There's another feature in there called the skylight. It's 10 foot above the roof.
Correct. I believe that falls under the appurtenance definition with, you know, spires, clear stories, you know, stair towers, you know, access and mechanical equipment, bulkheads.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Anyone? No? Okay.
That's all we have, Mr. Chairman, unless you have questions of Mr. Kennel.
Can I ask through the, through the chairman, just, and I again apologize, I was trying to look quick. Is there a basement or mechanical downstairs?
No basement. Slab.
Crawlspace?
Crawlspace or slab? Slab.
Okay, good. Is there anyone from the public that wishes to comment on this application? Could you step up to the microphone? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. I gotta tell you, this is much cleaner, much nicer than the first rendition we saw. I hope going forward with other applications, you're going to follow this and, and, and not waste this board's time and energy, you know, doing something that the professionals should do.
I have the message.
Okay. We clear?
Yes.
All right. Any further comments?
Mr. Dolan? Dr. Campbell? Mr. Riker?
Yes.
Mr. Bernstein? Mr. Herman?
Yes.
Mr. Wall?
Yes.
Mr. Fleming? Mr. Herring? And Mr. Huddak?
Yes, sir.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Okay. Before we adjourn this evening, we need to have the attorney's testor in the hall today. He needs to have his five-minute executive session. So if it clears out.
I can do the motion right now. Whereas the, Mr. Chairman, whereas the planning board, the township of Jackson is certain, is is subject to certain requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. And whereas the Open Public Meetings Act provides an executive session not open to the public, may be held for certain specified purposes when authorized by resolution. Whereas it is necessary for the planning board to discuss in a session not open to the public, certain matters related to items authorized by NJSA 10,412B, those items being litigation, updates and possible settlement discussions.
Okay. So can I have a motion to go into the executive session? All in favor?
Aye.
No. No, you don't add, nope. There's no conflict on this one.
Mr. Gardner?